All right. Good morning. Is it on? Oh, there we go. Okay. Good morning and welcome to our April 4th Board of Supervisors meeting for the County of Lake. We're going to call the meeting to order. And I'm wondering if anyone has a moment of silence?
Yeah, we did have a, yes, in South County, we did have a fatality last week. Just want to give condolences to the family, local residents, for many years, so just want to have a moment of silence.
Captain Taylor, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any extra items this morning?
I have none.
And then consideration, I'm sorry, approval of consent agenda. We are pulling 5.4. Are there any other items to be pulled?
It was 5.1.
I mean, 5.14, that's what I meant. Sorry. Anything else?
No other items.
Anything from the public?
5.14.
14. Okay, then I will bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 5.1, 5.2, oh, here, let's sit and read them out, sorry. 5.1 through 5.13.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is she here?
Yes, she is.
Yeah. Should we do 5.14 now, since we've got the time? Okay. 5.14 stating as the Board of Housing Commissioners, approve Lake County Housing Commission Housing Choice voucher program administrative plan for 2023 and signing of the annual civil rights certification HUD form H U D 50077 dash C R. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
And this is by Social Services. Who's presenting? Yeah? Okay.
I'm sorry, there was some confusion as to whether that was pulled or not, so we were having a side discussion.
Good morning, Board. My name is Lisa Faraco. I'm the Program Manager for Housing at the Department of Social Services, the agency that oversees the Public Housing Authority for Lake County. I'm joined by Teresa Wold, our Housing Program Coordinator. Today, we are seeking approval from your Board, sitting as the Board of Housing Commissioners, for the 2023 administrative plan. This plan is the policy and procedure manual for the housing programs we oversee. Each year, this admin plan is updated with revisions specified by HUD, plus any programmatic changes needed at the local level. Every year, we follow the same process. We properly notice and then hold a public hearing to go over any proposed changes to the admin plan. This year, the meeting was held on March 13th, 2023. Attendees at the public hearing included a member of the Resident Advisory Board and Lake County Housing Commission staff. During the meeting, staff gave a presentation detailing the proposed changes from the 2022 admin plan to the 2023 admin plan. Prior to that public meeting, we had a 45-day public comment period. The proposed plan was posted, all 500-some pages of it, and it was available for any member of the public who wished to read it and provide comments or recommendations. The Housing Commission received no comments regarding the proposed plan. As there were no changes proposed during the public comment period or during the public hearing, the proposed plan was approved to be submitted to your Board and to HUD as written. Additionally, the Public Housing Authority is requesting that the Chair of the Board of Housing Commissioners sign our annual civil rights certification form. This form is required by HUD and is basically a statement verifying that we will perform our duties as required by HUD. I included in the packet submitted to your Board a list of changes made to the annual admin plan. There were many required changes this year. They were described in detail during our public hearing. If any Board members have questions, Teresa and I are happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board? Any from the public? Not seeing any. Okay, we'll bring it back to the Board.
Madam Chair, as the Board of Housing Commissioners move to approve the Lake County Housing Commission Housing Choice voucher program administrative plan for 2023 and signing of the annual civil rights certification HUD form as detailed on our agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. That's it.
I was going to let her second it.
She was waiting on us.
All right, 9:06 a.m. public input. Do we have anyone from the public in the chambers? Not seeing any in the Zoom room? Okay. Then we will move on to our 9:07 item Pet of the Week.
Good morning. My name's Officer Downhour. I'm with Lake County Animal Care and Control. With me this morning is Officer Egan and Poe. Currently, Poe is residing in kennel 26 at our shelter. He is an eight-year-old boxer mix and absolutely loves and gets along with everybody. He is also already neutered, so his adoption costs will be a little bit lower. He is one of our longer-term residents. He's been with us since January, and we're really hoping to get him into a forever home. If anybody has any questions or would like to come and meet Poe, we're located at 4949 Hellbush Drive here in Lakeport, right behind the county jail. Or if you just want to go ahead and give us a call, 707-263-0278.
Thank you.
I know, you're a good boy. I'm done. Can you say bye? Hang on.
Thanks for coming in. It was good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, our 6.3 item, 9:08 a.m. is our National Poetry Month Poem of the Week from the library.
Good morning. I have to make note that the pet of the week's name is Poe. I'm assuming after Edgar Allan Poe. So I'll be coming by each week this month to read a poem in honor of National Poetry Month. I believe we have the proclamation later on the agenda. So I thought I'd give an easy introduction to poetry. This is not one of my own poems, but by Billy Collins. This is Introduction to Poetry.
Can we just get your name first for the record?
Oh, and I'm the Lake County Poet Laureate, Georgina Marie Gordado.
Thank you.
Introduction to Poetry by Billy Collins. "I ask them to take a poem and hold it up to the light like a color slide, or press an ear against its hive. I say, drop a mouse into a poem and watch him probe his way out, or walk inside the poem's room and feel the walls for a light switch. I want them to waterski across the surface of a poem, waving at the author's name on the shore. But all they want to do is tie the poem to a chair with rope and torture a confession out of it. They begin beating it with a hose to find out what it really means." Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on our poem? 6.4, 9:09 a.m. Presentation of Proclamation Designated April 2023 as National Poetry Month in Lake County as Proposed by Lake County Poet Laureate for 2020 to 2024, Georgina Marie Gordado. That's you.
I'm glad to be reading this with you. I, you know, about a month or two ago when we did the box, you reminded me that we worked together like 2005, so pretty cool, you know? So we're going to do a proclamation here, designating April 2023 as National Poetry Month in Lake County as proposed by Lake County Poet Laureate for 2020 through 2024, Georgina Marie Gordado. Whereas, National Poetry Month was launched by the Academy of American Poets in April 1996 to celebrate the integral role of poets in our culture and the poetry matters. And whereas National Poetry Month has become the largest literary celebration in the world with tens of millions of readers, students K through 12, teachers, librarians, booksellers, literary event curators, publishers, families, and of course, poets, marking poetry's important place in our lives. And whereas, County of Lake recognizes the contributions of poetry and literary arts for enriching the literary and cultural attributes of society. And whereas, the County of Lake acknowledges the relationship between poetry and political freedom and the exercise of free speech in forms recognizable by people of all over the world. And whereas, the County of Lake recognizes that poetry represents one of the most enduring forms of expression and contributes to the historical continuity of civilization. Now therefore, be it wholeheartedly proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of County of Lake does hereby appoint April 2023 as National Poetry Month for Lake County, passed and adopted this fourth day of April 2023. Signed, Chair of the Board, Jessica Pisca. Would you like to say anything?
Sure.
So I'll just say quickly that I've been the poet laureate since 2020, right when the pandemic hit. It's been an interesting few years. This is my final year as poet laureate. So thank you to the Board of Supervisors for continuously promoting and supporting poetry. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, thanks. Our 6.5 item, 9:10 a.m. Presentation of Proclamation Designating the week of April 3rd through the 9th, 2023 as National Public Health Week. You can go down there. Do we have anyone from public?
Public health people here that want to come up and be celebrated, so I don't just sit here reading this big, long proclamation all by myself?
Something coming up.
There we go. I have before me the world's longest proclamation, so please bear with me. There's a lot going on in public health, right? So whereas, this is a proclamation designating the week of April 3rd through 9th, 2023 as Public Health Week. Whereas, the week of April 3rd through 9th, 2023 is National Public Health Week. And whereas, the theme for National Public Health Week in 2023 is centering and celebrating cultures in health. And whereas, the goal in National Public Health Week in 2023 is to recognize the contributions of public health in improving the health of the people of the United States and achieving health equity. And whereas, the Administration Division is helping improving the health of Lake County by enabling each health services program to function in their purpose of promoting and protecting the health of local residents. Administration ensures accuracy and efficacy with spending county, state, and federal monies and reconciling grant and program documentation in order to allow health services staff to meet community members where they are and provide them with the means to achieve or maintain a state of well-being. And, and whereas, the Environmental Health Division is improving the health of the people of Lake County through education and encouraging compliance with public health laws. Environmental health keeps community members safe by ensuring safety standards are met in retail food establishments, recreational pools, tattoo facilities, et cetera, for consumer protection, proper handling, storage, and disposal of hazardous materials, landfills and solid waste, land use through septic system designed to prevent sewage and wastewater exposure, and construction of wells to prevent contamination. And, whereas, the First Five Division builds early childhood systems and supports needed to ensure Lake County's youngest children are safe, healthy, and ready to succeed in school and life. First Five Lake works collaboratively with local, state, and federal agencies to provide resources, advocacy, and support to many local families, hundreds of local families, as I just learned. Through initiatives such as Smart Start Eligibility Wizard, the Perinatal Mental Health Toolkit, the Lake Family Magazine, and kindergarten entry developmental profile, families are provided information to ensure their children's well-being. I should make you hold this. And to access, no, it's fine. And to access locally available resources and services. First Five Lake's vision is that one day, the success of Lake County will be measured by the well-being of its youngest children. And whereas, the Public Health Division is improving local health outcomes per providing information, resources, access, and services to Lake County community members. Public health programs educate and empower people to prevent disease in areas such as oral health, tobacco use, childhood lead exposure, and nutrition, and reduce our community's vulnerability to hazards and harmful impacts of natural disasters. Public health clinical programs focus on investigating communicable diseases, supporting mothers and babies, responding to emergencies and disasters, and providing leadership to assure that all members of our community are heard and able to meet their needs. And, whereas, the Veterans Service Office of Public Health is improving the health of local U.S. Armed Forces veterans and their families by actively pursuing their rights to receive benefits. Veterans Services works collaboratively with nationally chartered veterans organizations, the Department of Veterans Affairs, and others to assure local veterans and their dependents receive the entitlements they have earned for their military service. The Veterans Office has worked tirelessly to provide thousands of local families access to health benefits and has helped veterans across the world access millions of dollars in retroactive benefits. And, whereas, the County of Lake Health Services Department has commenced diversity, equity, and inclusivity initiatives to actively promote policy, systems, and services that enable good health and seek to remove obstacles and systemic and structural barriers such as poverty, racism, gender discrimination, and other forms of oppression that have resulted in health inequities. And whereas, the 11 rural health departments of Northern California have collectively highlighted health disparities for the following groups: tribal populations, Latinx populations, populations living in poverty, aging, those who are geographically isolated, and those who are experiencing substance use or mental health issues. And whereas, National Public Health Week also recognizes the partnership and service of local, public, and private agencies, foundations, community partners, academia, and health-related enterprises that are working in collaboration to promote healthy behaviors and bolster the Health Services Department's efforts in improving the health outcomes of Lake County residents. Page three. We're almost there, people. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate April 3rd through 9th, 2023 as Public Health Week and urges Lake County citizens, everybody here, to join in this important observance, passed and adopted this fourth day of April 2023. Signed, Jessica Pisca, Chair of Board of Supervisors. Let's all get healthy, people.
Thank you. I apologize for the length of the proclamation. It, I did write it, so. But I just wanted to highlight the, every division that we have in Lake County Health Services. And so, sorry, I timed myself for my talk. It's two minutes. It's really short, I swear. I'm Leila Romero. I am Lake County's Health Equity Program Coordinator. And I want to thank you all for joining us in acknowledging and celebrating our department's hard work and commitment to our county's health. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank all the agencies, organizations, and individuals who work with us as our partners and stakeholders. Public health is so much bigger than just our department. As you've heard, we have a very big department, and we, each division works with collaboratively. Take the social determinants of health. There are the factors in our environment that affect health and quality of life, and the five domains are economic stability, education access and quality, healthcare access and quality, neighborhood and built environment, and social and community context. Looking at this bigger picture, it's almost hard to find someone who isn't contributing to Lake County's health. Folks in the schools, working on sidewalks and water, and organizing and attending public events all around the county are all part of it. So to everyone in Lake County working towards our community's health, even if they don't know it, thank you, and this week is for you too. As you heard in the proclamation, in public health work nationwide, health equity has become a priority. Health equity strives for every person to have the opportunities and resources they need to attain their highest level of health. This means acknowledging the health disparities in our community and the systems that create them, as well as listening to the affected populations as how do we can, we can support taking down barriers. So I invite everyone to join Health Services Department in reexamining ourselves and our systems and committing to achieving health equity. Thank you.
Thank you. No, we should make you hold all three. Hold the third page out.
Oh, okay.
So just to point out, all department heads, this does not fit in the frame.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, thank you so much. 6.6, our 9:15 a.m. item, Presentation of Employee Service Awards, and we have got Human Resources.
Good morning, everybody. Pam Samic, Director of Human Resources, and I have Cherish with me, who helps create the presentation, all of the service awards, and puts this all together for us. So twice a year, we like to come together to honor everybody who has hit five, 10, 15, and increments of five years of service. We will have the department heads or designee come up and read the names of those we are celebrating this year. We thank you all for your contribution and your service to the county. First, we have Admin. So the first person, oh, there he is. Well, come on up. Come on up. This is your team. Come on up.
Sorry, everybody.
Don't take that.
So first up, Christine Hut, Admin Analyst 1, five years. She. She's been a great addition to our department. Very much appreciate all she does for our department. Thank you. I'm new to this, sorry, guys. Next up is Leon Riplinger. He's been with our department for 15 years. He's our mail clerk. And I do want to say thank you to Leon, considering ever since he started, we've had a lot less problems within our mail distribution in the courthouse. Before him, it was quite a revolving door. So appreciate that definitely. Next up is Assessor Recorder.
Apparently, they're not participating, so back to you, Stephen, with the. Oh, yes, sure. Lucinda Rozansky, 15 years. Thank you for your service.
Apparently, I may appear a lot today. So as interim Behavioral Health Director, I have the pleasure to introduce Irvin Collins, Behavioral Health Clinician, five years. Next up is Rebecca Furia, Behavioral Health Clinical Specialist, five years. And then there's Brian Pearson, Mental Health Case Manager, five years. Appreciate it. And then Shauna, uh-oh. The Adoru, Behavioral Health Clinical Specialist, five years. Did I sort of get that right?
Yeah, you did better than some.
And then for 20 years, we have Scott Abbott, Behavioral Health Program Manager. Appreciate it, Scott.
Sure.
I did have something to say, but it's at my desk, so I apologize. I had, I had to run in real quick. Next is Child Support. For Child Support, Shara, Sheree, sorry, Cardono, Child Support Assistant 2, 10 years. And then Community Development is next.
Bill Collins, Chief Building Official. Jack Smalley, five years, Plan Examiner 2. Longest tenured building guy.
Next, we have District Attorney. Okay. We have Bruce Smith, five years. Jamie Nun, 10 years. And then we have Denise Henchcliffe, 25 years. Next department is Probation. Okay. We have Zachary Fields, five years. Next up, we have Public Health.
Good morning. Today, Public Health is celebrating Liberty Francis, Health Programs Coordinator, with five years. And Crystal Williams, Staff Services Analyst 2, with 10 years.
Public Services.
All right. So I'll call them out. Aaron Banthrol, Facilities Maintenance Technician, five years. Charles Claybon, Landfill Heavy Equipment Operator, five years. Beverly or Bev, Bev Dodgen, Land, excuse me, Waymaster, five years. Okay, Celia Holberg, Staff Services Specialist, five years. Will Kenner, excuse me, Will is not available. Evan, Evan Jost, Landfill Heavy Equipment Operator, five years. And it probably says Jesse, but Clark, Clark McAdie, Museum Curator, five years. All right, Charles or Chuck McLaren, Waymaster, five years. All right, and 20 years, Chris Byrd, Landfill Manager. Thank you.
Where's the Beastie Boys at, Chris?
Next, we have Public Works.
I appreciate that.
Do I need to hold it back here?
No, I'm good. Said, I hope there's a cheat sheet. All right, first up, five years, Eddie Peregrina. Eddie is a Public Works Lead Worker with us in Upper Lake Garden. Thank you. Next year, next 10 years, and I didn't see him, Brent Bennett, also a Public Works Lead Worker out of the Crystal area. Oh, there he is. And, is this right? Good heavens. 35 years of service, Lori Price, Staff Service Analyst.
Next up, we have the Sheriff's Department.
For the Sheriff's Office, we would like to thank employees, many of who could not be here today, but Josh Morris, Deputy Sheriff Corrections 2, for five years. Laura Naj, a Law Enforcement Records Technician, Senior, five years. Daniel Pimento, Sheriff's, Deputy Sheriff 2, Corrections, five years. David Pike, Deputy Sheriff 2, five years. Anton Skylaroff, Deputy Sheriff 2, five years. Travis Brooks, Sergeant, Corrections, 10 years. Marco Stellatori, Deputy Sheriff 2, 10 years. Matthew McCabe, Deputy Sheriff 2, 10 years. Milton Rhine, Deputy Sheriff 2, 10 years. Eric Schneider, Correctional Aid, 15 years. Jose Zapata, Deputy Sheriff 2, 15 years. Thank you. And Hank Comstock, Deputy Sheriff 2, Corrections, 25 years. Thank you.
And last but not least, Norm Taylor, 10 years. Next, we have Social Services.
Good morning, Crystal Markatan, Department of Social Services. We will start with Ryan Alani, Eligibility Specialist, three, five years. Jennifer Blaha, Public Authority Specialist, five years. Amber Davis, Deputy Social Services Director, Child Welfare, five years. Marissa Hammack, Eligibility Specialist Supervisor, five years. Jennifer Powell, Eligibility Specialist 2, five years. Lynette Terry, Staff Services Specialist, five years. Ralph Cochrane, Accountant 2, 10 years. Tara Gandolfo, Office Services Supervisor, 10 years. Jessica Holloway, Staff Services Analyst 1, 10 years. Sonya Luan, Long Term Care Ombudsman, 10 years. Kelly Page, Deputy Social Services Director, Administration, 10 years. Anna Robles, Office Assistant 3, 10 years. Angela Curry, Social Worker Supervisor 2, Child Welfare, 20 years. Angela, oh, back up. Rachel Dillman Parsons, Program Manager, 20 years. Kirsten Torres, Eligibility Specialist 3, 20 years. And last, but certainly not least, Michelle Dibble, Deputy Social Services Director, 25 years. Thank you.
Next, we have Special Districts.
First, we have Yolanda Garabey, our Grant Manager. She's not able to make it today, but five years. And then Cassandra Benitez, Accountant 1, 10 years. And also out today, Stephen Phillips, our Utility Systems Compliance Coordinator, at 20 years.
Next, we have U.S. Cooperative Extension. We have Shawna Labash, 15 years. Next, for the department heads, Jessica, would you like to present with us?
Catherine Vanderwall, 15 years. Where's our Sheriff today? He's not here. Okay, Sheriff Howe, our Sheriff Coroner, 30 years. Oh, he's with us. Congratulations, Sheriff. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate the acknowledgement.
So I think we need one more standing ovation for all of these years of service for so many of our valued staff. Thank you so much. Thank you all for coming in today, even those in here to support. We have an incredibly committed staff. We can provide the work and services that we do because of all of you out there, so thank you so much for the years of commitment. Anything else from the board?
Not much I can add to that, other than thank you for everything that you do. I really appreciate it. And I learn more about you guys as I see the names and the people. Ah, the connections. So appreciate seeing that.
Just shout out to my Social Services peeps. I see you. Good to see you.
Okay, anything from the public?
Just one final comment. Thank you very much for all that you do. I've said it multiple times. We get to sit up here on the diocese, but you folks do all the hard work to take care of our constituents, so I just want to say thank you very much. Thank you from the admin all the way down. So I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move on to our 6.7 item, 9:19 a.m. Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
If anyone's going to come on up, any people as possible. And I thought I saw there was a little one in the room earlier.
You want to set that down here?
Yeah, come on up. Open the doors. All right, okay, yeah, we're good. We're good. You're perfect. Right there. You're right in the cameras, right on you. There you go.
Thank you.
All right, well, what a great representation, obviously, for this proclamation. And so I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake State of California, Proclamation Designating the Month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas over 3.6 million children are reported abused and neglected in the United States each year, and it's estimated that over 1,750 children died from abuse and neglect in a single year. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community problem, all citizens should become more aware of the effects of child abuse and its prevention. And finding solutions depends on the involvement of people throughout the community, and communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong, thriving children and families. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, the business community, and supporting parents in raising their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas current local initiatives to prevent child abuse include building resilience, a countywide collaboration, adverse childhood experiences, nurturing families programs, differential response, RCS wraparound services, motherwise, and protective factors. And whereas, events being held for the month of April this year are the Pinwheel Challenge, can you hold the pinwheels up? And child abuse information is being shared on media for the month. April 12th is Wear Blue for the Children's Day. April 15th in Lake Porter Library Park, and April 29th at Austin Park in Clearlake will be the Children's Festival. Placements are being placed, yeah, placements are being placed at local businesses around the lake that support the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Now therefore, the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Lake County, and calls upon its residents, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the community in which we live, passed and adopted this fourth day of April 2023, and signed by the Chair of the Board, Jessica Peiska. Hold on, who's gonna talk?
You want me to go first? Okay. Hi, I'm Jamie White. Thank you for presenting us with this today. I apologize it was not longer. I will work on that next year for you.
I'm very happy that it was nice and short.
I have a quota now. I'm on it. So as you can see, everyone is here today, but not everyone. It takes this entire community, so I have this little blurb I'm gonna share with you guys. So the future prosperity of the community, state, nation depends on our ability to foster the health and well-being of the next generation. Innovative states and communities have been able to design high-quality programs to reduce and prevent child abuse and neglect. These programs have created significant long-term improvements for children and are the kind of innovations that we need. We know, we now know that basic architect of human brain is constructed through an ongoing process that begins before birth and continues through adulthood. When we build a house, you go step by step, beginning with a strong foundation. Just like a house, a strong foundation in children's early years increases the probability of positive outcomes. So a weak foundation increases the odds of later difficulties. Some stress is inevitable in life, but children can experience positive stress, such as successful, successfully meeting the challenge of learning a new skill. Children may also experience difficult situations, such as a family move, a death of a loved one, or other challenging circumstances. When the stress is buffered through an environment of supportive relationships, as in all of us, the stress becomes tolerable and less damaging to the child's development. Experiencing a chronic stressful condition such as neglect or abuse is what scientists call toxic stress, and it can disrupt developing brain architecture. This can lead to lifelong difficulties in learning, memory, and self-regulation. And children who are exposed to serious early stress develop an exaggerating stress response that over time weakens their defense system against diseases such as heart disease and depression. Our community has a very strong foundation, which also includes the fiber Our community has a very strong foundation, which also includes the five protective factors that contribute to positively supporting these relationships and dissoning the toxic stress. So by supporting our events that take place in April, not just April, but the year around, as in proclamations like today, the flag raising ceremony that we have on April 28th at Sheriff's Department, the pinwheel challenge, which in case you are not a part of, this has gotten big, guys. So we're gonna need everyone's participation. And if you create a pinwheel garden, whatever it is that you do with those pinwheels, please hashtag resilient Lake County and send those photos in, because we have prizes and we have trophies and we have amazing stuff for this very, what do you call it? They are, everyone wants to participate in this. So if you don't see pinwheels in someone's, maybe we should start that toilet. You know, like if you put a toilet on somebody's yard, you have to put a pinwheel on their yard. So we'll have pinwheels everywhere. Anna has now started on April 12th to encourage everyone to wear blue. So we want to see blue on April 12th. Of course, attend our advocacy walks, and let's fight to end the cycle, and it takes all of you guys. So thank you.
Gonna kind of speak sideways so we can look at everybody at the same time. I'm Kim Costa. I am one of two program managers with Lake County Child Welfare Protective Services.
And I'm Mary Pagon, here to support Kim today.
The other program manager.
The other program manager.
We just wanted to say a little something about child welfare services. Lake County Child Welfare partners with local tribes, public agencies, schools, community-based organizations, and law enforcement to protect children at the highest risk of abuse and neglect, and to intervene when needed to ensure that children do not remain in harmful situations. Child Welfare Social Workers engage families in affecting positive change and seek to preserve the integrity of family systems and tribal connections while ensuring safety from abuse and neglect. Child Welfare, Lake County Child Welfare appreciates and acknowledges the efforts of all community partners in keeping our children safe and preventing child abuse. Additionally, we thank this board for recognizing the importance of these prevention efforts for our county's children and families. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Laura Sullivan with Redwood Community Services, and I just want to thank everybody for showing up today and being part of preventing child abuse and neglect. It takes a village, it takes our entire community to break the cycle, to create change, and to prevent child abuse. We're happy to be part of that change. And just thank you. Thank you to each of you. Thank you for doing your part to stand up for our children.
Okay, with that, we're gonna get a picture, but I do have one final comment. Key word: breaking that cycle. We all need to do that for the next seven generations. Support our children, our families, so we can make it better for the next generation. So thank you for all your hard work, everyone. And we're gonna get a photo. I think we fill in this way a little bit. Sammy, you want them to fill in this way a little? How do you want to do it?
Do this.
Don't move, don't move. Okay, just need to email that.
All right, we will move on to our 6.8 item. Our 9:20 a.m. item, presentation by the Child Care Planning and Development Committee.
Good morning. Hopefully this is not too, okay, can you guys hear me okay? Good morning. My name is Angela Cuero Marroquin. I am the Child Care Planning Council and our Lake County Quality Counts Program Director at the Lake County Office of Ed. As you may know, our Child Care Planning Council is approved by you, the Board of Supervisors, and I'm here just to give you a little bit of an update of all the work that we do, including the work I do with the Children's Council as well. Our biggest work right now is we are working on our master plan goals, which include our promoting availability and accessibility of quality childcare, early education, and support services throughout Lake County. We're promoting quality and supporting resources for improving the quality childcare and early education available in Lake County, and promoting the importance of the childcare and early education industry throughout our county. We are currently getting ready for our 15th Annual Early Educators Award Dinner. We host this to honor our early educators and to appreciate all the hard work that goes into working with our county's youngest population, which is the zero to five-year-olds. We gather sponsorships from local businesses to host this every year. And we have a really good support system, so we're able to do this every year. And we do a whole nomination project to gather all those people. We just listed our 66 nominees this year on our Lake County Child Care Planning Council page, as well as our LCOE page. We also host a variety of professional development opportunities for early educators, so we're tasked with making sure that we're providing as many protective factor trainings, trauma-informed care, social and emotional learning, math, music, everything that goes into providing quality, high childcare. And that includes from the infants to preschools, TK, and kindergarten teachers as well. We host, and we host once, sometimes twice a year, we do a bigger conference where we bring in keynote speakers from, sometimes anywhere from Texas to Tennessee. I bring different providers or keynote speakers that come and speak to our early educators. And usually, we get about 100 to 120 teachers, providers at those conferences, which is pretty, pretty big for us. We also get people from neighboring counties, because we open it up to our region, which is from Del Norte all the way to Marin County. We also currently have the grant from First Five Lake for Lake Bloom, and we just started the Lake Bloom in Espanol page for our programs to make sure that all of our communities are being reached. So we have been printing out, if you haven't seen it yet, for the last few years, we've been printing the Bloom into kindergarten book, and of course, our Bloom into kindergarten book in Espanol. So we have it in both languages. And this is a strategies book for parents to get their children ready for kindergarten. We have been spreading this book out now for about five years. Every year, we kind of update it with anything new and pertinent for parents to learn on what they need to do to get their children ready for kindergarten. It's a big Facebook page, and we push, push, push milestones, developmental areas for children to continue to grow and bloom so that we are not missing anyone. We are currently running our local Quality Counts program through a different, different grants given by the state, as well as First Five California. We support our participants in achieving their quality improvement goals to better serve children zero to five years old. Just by participating in this program, they are committing to providing quality care. We currently have 68 of our early education programs participating, and this includes center-based preschools, Headstarts, family childcare providers, and the Family Friend and Neighbors Program, which are people who are watching other people's children and their family, friends, or neighbors. But they are also participating to provide quality childcare. We're trying to get away from that babysitting stigma of, you know, we're just babysitters, but in fact, we're trying to make sure that everyone that is watching a child from zero to five is in fact giving a quality, giving quality care. We provide the coaching support for these programs with the help of our local resource and referral agency, the NCO Rule and Communities Childcare. Our newest task is to share information with parents, teachers, and the community about California's Great Start Universal Pre-Kindergarten. So if you haven't heard yet, TK is now going to be accepting four-year-olds. They are in a kind of a staggered start, but by 25, 26, every four-year-old will be eligible for TK, which is a full, more of a full-day program, which will not cost anything to parents, as well as, it gives full day care for children four years and up. So now we're tasked on developing a work group that is going to plan to include all three and four-year-olds now in our county are being reached and offered pre-kindergarten opportunities, which currently is not the case. It's still obviously a parent choice, but we want to make sure that parents understand and know where their children can get those services available to them. We also have, there's a lot of information going out into the community about universal pre-kindergarten. So if you don't know about it, please reach out to me. You can find me on the Lake County Child Care Planning Council on Facebook or on our Lake County Office of Education website. I want to thank you for your time inviting me to share a little piece of the great work that the Child Care Planning Council is doing in our county. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the report. Questions? Do we have anything from the board?
I should know this. TK, Transitional Kindergarten.
Yes, sorry. I should, I should explain that. Yes, Transitional Kindergarten.
And distinguish from pre-K. So TK, TK, and K?
Yes. Preschool is usually three and fours. TK will now be, in a couple of years, fours and early fives. And then kindergarten will be the five, six. So it's, it's moving along.
Anything else? Anything else from the board? Supervisor Spatier?
I'll just add to, appreciate the work that Bloom is doing. I was there when we approved for the grant from First Five. I know that my hope is that we can continue to do better in the warm handoff so that our kids are more prepared for school, so that our schools can see their report cards doing a whole lot better, not because of their efforts necessarily, but because things are moving in the direction of helping one another as we reach those next steps. Our schools are trying to help for whatever kids need to do afterwards, which is college, technical schools, or working. We need to prepare our kids, but we need to prepare the zero to five as best as possible for school, and this program absolutely does that. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Just trying to work with families as well to try to promote that a little more. As a young mom myself, when I started, I was raising a child as a child. So these resources, I think, have become very, very much more helpful in our community to support that. And parent support is, I think, was needed in education. So I appreciate all the support.
There is one thing that I hope we continue talking about. I know First Five will be continuing the discussion, and that's the zero to three, where daycare or preschool or other things, or preschool is not available, but our daycares took a huge hit during our COVID.
They did, and they're coming back. So we've signed on about seven now, in the last week. So we're going, we're going.
Great. That's great news.
Yes.
So are we back to pre-COVID levels?
I would have to check with Jamie at NCO, but we're definitely getting up there. So I think it was about 70-something, and I think we're probably at about 60 or so more now. So we're getting there.
We're getting close. That's excellent news. Thank you. Do we have anything from the public? All right, and we bring it back to the board. Any final comments? Supervisor Crandall?
Say thank you for this presentation. Previously, I used to serve as the education director, which was, some of the work I had to do was oversight of a CCDF, Child Care Development Fund, I think it is?
Yes.
Yeah, right. And so in doing that, I had to hire teachers in his three to five in the area. And I just see the kids now, so that was like 2013. So these kids are, you know, they're almost, I think they might even be 18. So it's just, I could see the development in their lives because of some of this work that was done. So very important.
Thank you. My first preschool class is graduating high school this year. So I'm like, wow, that makes me feel old, but at the same time, I'm very proud that, you know, they got those earlier years first. And we are working with all of our, even, you know, we have our migrant Headstart Program, all of our tribal programs are now on our Quality Counts Program, and so we're able to support all of our communities, all of them. So especially our low-income families as well. So that's why I do the work I do, because we're serving everyone, right? So thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Anna. All right, we'll move on to 7.2, review and consideration of increasing the maximum monthly county contribution of insurance coverage for each employee enrolled in a county-sponsored group medical dental vision insurance plan effective July 1st, 2023.
You can't leave now.
Is she on her way? Okay. She is. We are moving along today. I think this is a follow-up discussion from our governance meeting in January.
Sorry, I've got several things today, so. So in, on January 31st, 23, during the annual governance workshop, the board requested that we bring back options to increase the county contribution. Listed below are a couple of illustrated options for your consideration, 1,200, 1,300, and 1,500. Staff recommends increasing the monthly county contribution for insurance from 1,000 to 1,500 for each employee enrolled in sponsored medical dental and vision effective July 1st. In order to make this benefit available to all employees, staff is recommending that the board authorize the county administrative officer to execute resolutions for confidential units A and B to increase the monthly contribution and execute side letters for units 3, 4, and 5, 6, 8, and 10. This does not change the 80/20 for unit 17 and unit 16.
Do you have something?
Well, it's probably gonna be more Q and A, because it's data-related for me.
Okay.
Just a quick clarification.
Sure.
I got an email about this, and I believe I understand what the language that you just said is, just for clarification. Executing these things means initiating them and bringing them back to the board, because the board makes the final decision.
Correct.
It's not executed entirely by admin.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Just wanted to clarify that, make sure that that was said.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this back. This is a big issue for staff that has to carry their families or any dependents. It's not just an attraction issue. As we found out, we've lost candidates, very highly qualified candidates. But also, it's a retention issue. And if we have staff that come to us as a single, and they start a family and start having children, then we have the potential of losing them. And so this is incredibly important for our, both our attraction and retention. Is there anything else from the board before I open it up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm glad this is taking place, and I just want to highlight how in unit six, we struggle with the retainment and recruiting and things of that nature, and I just really am glad to see this coming forward. So thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. And pardon my own ignorance. I never understood this when I wasn't here. So if we adjust this up for a single, basically, the 1,000 or the 12 or the 13 will totally cover basically that. And if we go even all the way up to 1,500, it won't cover all of the additional expenses our employees with families incur. employees with families incur, right? So I guess my only question is, a flat thing across employees, I guess, has to be the way it is, but depending on the size of the family, the actual benefit of this increase won't, well, it won't be equal. I mean, it'll be equal in terms of that, but I guess it's an equity question. So how do we benefit the people with large families in a way that is equivalent to a single or a family with just one child?
That's an excellent point, and hopefully we'll get to having that conversation at another time. Do you mind if I say?
Sorry.
For example, like my family right now, I pay out of my pocket almost $1,800 a month for coverage for my family. That's with the $1,000 stipend. So going from 1,000 to 1,500 is going to be really helpful, but I do hope at some point we can look at having some kind of more equitable split, but that's not the conversation for today.
The reason why that's not a conversation today is any kind of equity across all where it's like 80/20, 70/30 covered by the county would actually be negotiations, and that's that would be through our MOUs. And we don't, at this stage, wouldn't like to open up the MOUs. This adding from 1,000 to 1,200, 1,300, or 1,500 can be done as a side letter because it's an added benefit, not any real negotiations. The difference, so currently, a single can be charged anywhere from $64 all the way down to zero, and a family is anywhere from $1,790 a month down to 1,223. So that's per month. And under the new plan, if we are selected by the board for 1,500, try to save that one, employee would be zero across the board. Employee plus one would be a maximum of 623 a month, and on the bronze plan, it would be 187 a month. An employee plus two, which is the big families, would drop from 1,790 to 1,290, but it, so it would still be 1,290 a month, but it's far closer to where we can get. And if it's your board's wish, we can talk about that later for when negotiations happen for the next MOU.
Supervisor Spatier?
So no further presentation, just question and answers at this moment in time and public comment. Just kind of curious if there's more information before I start asking further questions or making comments.
There's plenty of information. It's more of what information would you like?
Okay. And I would say that while we don't have the information to have a discussion of anything different, I think we're talking about the benefits package and what's being offered, and maybe directing for anything different. We may not be able to discuss it because we don't have the details, but I think that there's a lot of options on how to handle benefit packages when you go from county to county, that it's across the board, there's differences. It's not one way. On a personal level, we need to figure out how to do this. On a macro level, I'm highly concerned that we continue to add on our burden of expenses. I'm going to go back to our budget, where we talked about if our vacancies go down to potentially zero, I know it's not going to happen, but they're there, they're salaried, and we have money allocated for that, that in three years, we would not be able to continue to afford to pay all of these people. Now we're going to add on top of that burden without having solved that potential three-year cliff that we cannot have happen. So I know that there's a conversation in the future about doing what we had planned to do in our fiscal crisis management, which is possibly reducing our position allocations of those positions that are vacant and historically been vacant, at least that's the way that I would look at it. But that was the intention of the fiscal crisis management plan, was to increase and give raises and decrease the number of positions that were available. That way, we could take away from the other salaries and implement it in the raises. We didn't do that, hence the three-year cliff that we have, that you talked to us about during, and that's a potential issue. This adds a burden on it. In my personal opinion, I can't say yes to moving forward on this without having that other conversation, because it keeps putting us in greater potential jeopardy without knowing that we've solved the initial problem that you discussed to us when we did our budget. Personal level, we got to figure out how to do this. This is absolutely not a highlight of the benefit package when you're trying to move your family here to get a job here. As you grow and you start a new family and you work here, definitely not a highlight to stay here. So I'm definitely interested in the information you provided, but I am not interested today in saying, yes, we're going to do this, because I feel I need that budget and larger conversation. We keep adding new positions about every single budget rather than taking away, and now we're adding more burden on top of that. And there's also a balance between what we're providing to the public versus what we're providing to ourselves. And I know we need us in order to provide services to be rendered, but we've also given about $16 million in the past two years directly to our staff in order to have retention, in order to help with recruitment, and we're still at 20% today. Now, this could be one of the reasons that we're still at 20%, I'm not going to deny that. But I think that that larger context of budget and this is needed in order to say yes or no, or else I'm nervous that we're just potentially digging a hole rather than solving a problem.
So that would take a lot to unpack as an answer, but what I would say is, yes, I did say in budget last year, well, technically this fiscal year, there could be, there would be a potential three-year cliff for general fund. If we were completely full, and like Supervisor Spatier said, we're never going to be full, no matter what agency we are, but that would lead to at least 5% or 10% vacancy only, and if we didn't make any changes during the year, or if our revenues didn't come in better than expected. So the only reason why I would bring something like this forward is, this year has actually proven that property tax and sales tax, which is not the only revenue sources, but the main ones for general fund, are coming in better than prior, which is why we can make the change for your board salary. I'm not going to say it's going to be all rosy in three years, but for the June conversation, when we go over the budgets, that definitely should be a topic where we, as admin, specifically go over the three-year projection if something changes, like, you know, we make changes, or if we don't make any changes on whether or not that cliff still exists, because a lot more funding sources have been coming in since that conversation, like the LATCF and other things, which is why it is not currently a financial issue, but that doesn't mean down the road in three to five to 10 years, if those extra funding sources don't come in, it could potentially be a problem. And that's the kind of analysis that needs to be presented during our June budgets.
And I don't disagree. However, we are looking at high vacancies, we're having retirements, we're having really a difficult time filling key positions. I know CIO Parker lost candidates because of this package, and if we don't act, that's going to prolong this pain of not getting those seats filled.
And maybe there's another option, because I actually do believe that employees should pay part of their benefits, and so maybe you don't shift this to everybody, but you shift the contribution to the employee plus one and family group, because I don't think it's a hardship for employees to pay $100 a month for their benefits, and that's in the top-tier plan. So we could look at other options, which we didn't do, in trying to increase some family coverage.
So let me tell you what the cost would be estimated for general fund. So if we moved to 1,500 and all singles and everybody shifted over, it would be about $257,000 a year. And if, because of moving it from 1,000 to 1,500, if anywhere, so if 25% of the current registered singles switched to family, it would be an additional 236,000. So a little under 500,000 is probably where we would end if, end up, if we made family plans enticing enough for families to actually enroll, which is not gargantuan, but countywide, it's over $1 million. So there's the amounts you're thinking about when you're making the decision on the extra costs for general fund, et cetera. And since we're quiet, I'll say that the county contribution as a whole is a little over 8.7 million a year for insurance as we stand now.
Okay.
So it's definitely an increase, but it's not massive in that world.
Supervisor Crandall?
Okay. Well, I think Supervisor Simon had his at first.
Go ahead, I'll go next.
Okay. So for me, I hear you Supervisor Spatier, I just, I look at, I look at the budget units, and for me, I do know that Lake County, you know, Corrections is the base of what we struggle with when it comes to the deputies, especially around the lake where we have, you know, the hour and a half to two hours timeframe. If this can fill those positions and get deputies on the street, yeah?
I stopped you there real quick. DSA is already on the 80/20.
The sheriffs?
Yeah.
I'm not talking about them, I'm talking about Corrections.
Corrections.
Yes. And the reason I say that is because they're the base. Once they're filled, if we can entice people to stay or to come, this gives the sheriffs an opportunity to do their work, and, you know, in essence, crime will be, you know, lessened, which gives our businesses the opportunity and people the opportunity to prosper in that area. So I think this helps for something like that. I think also with the district attorney, it does the same thing, because more cases can be done, you know? I mean, it's just, for me, I think it's a move that needs to happen, and I, I'll go, I would go further, but I mean, I think you get the gist of what I'm saying, so.
Vice Sheriff Simon?
Yeah, you know, definitely hear your concerns, Runo. Every time we have this conversation, and we do need that more information and more in-depth conversation when it comes to June, when we're having our update and what we're looking at moving forward. But this is a continuing conversation. When we had talked about negotiating our last agreements with units, we knew that this conversation was coming. Retention is a big part of that. When we were having those conversations about getting raises for recruitment, bringing employees to fill staff, we also needed to really take into effect the retention part of this. Today, we gave out awards for five years, 10 years, 15 years, and that's what we're really looking to backfill to support those folks that have been here, supporting us and our constituents. And yeah, it's a challenge. There is no crystal ball as we look forward. We're going to really lean on the staff here to give us the information as we move forward to make these decisions, but I think it's one of the tools we need to put into place so we can have some of those more in-depth conversations. So from my point of view, this is a continuing conversation we've had for the past six years since I've been on the board. I know it will be continuing with many other board members as we move forward, but I think this is a step in the right direction as we're moving forward, so I'm prepared to support this today.
And I did want to add one more comment, not specifically to your comment, Supervisor Simon. If it's approved ahead of the budget, like it would be in this scenario, it's not necessarily that much added to the budget. The department, if they get a net county cost of $1 million, this would be part of it, and they have to build it into their budget. So it doesn't necessarily auto raise the overall budget by that amount. It just changes an expense potentially from somewhere else to there unless we have the extra funds to actually increase their general fund contribution.
Supervisor Spatier?
A couple of things. One, I believe that after asking enough questions, that in a side letter, it does offer the opportunity for negotiations. Is that correct, that on the side letter that does exist?
I don't think it does, because we're just increasing the contribution. It's not changing any significant work conditions, so I think it's just a courtesy note if we're just changing the contribution. If we were restructuring it to be 80/20, that would increase the single people's cost, so that would be a change in working conditions and would take money away. This is giving money back to staff. So I really don't see it as a negotiation.
And I wholeheartedly disagree from the perspective of a union. Is this what they want? Have they requested that this is what they want? So we don't even know what they want. I, I'm going to pause and see if County Council has a comment.
Yes, so typically, the meet and confer requirements under the MMBA, Myers Milliers Brown Act, which deals with the negotiation terms, provisions between the county and the bargaining units pertaining to wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment. I believe historically, when side letters come out, there is a signature field for the union or union representative to sign off on, and so the, part of the purpose of the side letter would be to provide notice to the union such that if they want to pursue, say, a meet and confer, a further meet and confer, then that would be the starting point of that. And as always, our office is willing to work with HR to hash out the meet and confer requirements, the applicability of that, and the, and if, and anything further from that point.
And I think that, I mean, we've done things, and what we've done seems more of a, this is what we're giving you, rather than an actual negotiations, and I'm not seeing the changes that we claim we should be seeing, and maybe we should change our strategy to ask what the people who work for us would like to see from us, rather than telling them, hey, here's what we're giving you, because just because this is what we're giving may not be what they're asking for, what they actually want from us. I just, I've been on the other side, and if somebody's offering something, I might come back with a little bit of something different, and I just think it's a healthy relationship to have, and I'm not seeing us having, from my perspective, I'm not seeing us having those conversations. I know that Mr. Carter brought up the LA CTF, I'm never going to remember the exact acronym, and no offense, that's one-time funds. I want to make sure that we have the continuous funding to be able to make that happen. And you also talked about that departments are going to make do with fitting it into their departments, but that's going to take away potentially from some of the services or the contracting or other things that we would be paying for to render the services to the community. And those are the things that I have to keep reminding myself of, that we spend a lot, and we have to do a lot in order for the quality of life in our communities to enhance, and it's that balancing act of how do we keep our employees, how do we recruit good employees, and how do we make sure we're rendering those services? And that's why I, until I know with the budget that everything is clear and clean, this is a great idea, and in my opinion, just remains a good idea until further notice for me.
But we do have the opportunity next year to start with our negotiations and to look at making some, hopefully some more significant changes that will work for everybody, but this is a way that we can give some temporary relief to staff that are really, really hurting because of these increases in healthcare this year. I mean, that's a lot of money that people weren't expecting to have to pay.
Final question. What is the percentage that you expect healthcare to increase, just because that's what we're paying as well?
Between 9% and 13% is what the projections are for next year, and probably more the following year, because the following year is our shore-up year where utilization comes into play. And now that we have people going back to the doctors and able to seek services, I think we'll see a bigger increase a year down the road.
Yeah. So we have to make.
Do we have more utilization than the pool?
Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, this is a quick fix, but next year is when I hope that we can really get into making some significant change.
I do know what groups. I mean, we do have a group that has consistently asked for 80/20, and that is Corrections, but that is, you know, it's going to impact the single families or single people more, because then they're picking up more coverage. And, you know, it was a broad discussion when we did the sheriffs of the whole group, and even though the single people knew they were picking up now $300 a month in some cases, they wanted to do that to cover the families in their unit. And so that definitely will take negotiations. I do know that is a group that asked for that. I'm not sure our other groups would go for that, but increasing the family or increasing the overall contribution helps those people that are, that have their family. That's a $500 pay increase right back to their paycheck for those people who have to have their families on.
Yeah, and I, you know, our job is to, is to serve the community, but at some point you have to put the oxygen mask on yourself first and you have to care for the staff that was in here today and make sure that their needs are being met and not at the expense of other programs. That investment in my mind has to be there. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. And just to clarify for the singles, it'll go up to 1,500, but if their cost is less than that, they're not going to get a bonus in their payment. It's just going to cover the actual cost of the premium and no more. So just to be clear for everyone tuning in, and I think you're right, depending on the unit, not everyone is going to be looking in the future when we negotiate these to be going out of pocket for singles to help out their families with children. It's been an interesting mixing of metaphors. I appreciate your comments Supervisor Sabatier, and I know budgeting will be an ongoing dialogue, but we're in a hole and it's hard to fall off a cliff when you're in a hole. And the hole right now I'm focused on is recruiting and retention and the non-stop, I mean, it's been non-stop when I was a line worker and now that I'm here, just how much healthcare costs are hurting our employees with families. And I think, I think it's prudent and necessary to address that now, even though there are longer-term questions about all of our various sources of funding, but I see a very solid plan here and we don't even know exactly how many people are going to dive back into family coverage with this additional basically stipend, but we have to start somewhere. And this is, I think, a very reasonable plan.
Okay, I'll open it up for the public. I'm not seeing anybody in the chambers. We do have someone in Zoom, Patrick Sullivan.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, Patrick Sullivan, Treasurer-Tax Collector. I just wanted to share some of my experience with the family plan here. When I decided to make the move to Lake County, when the position opened in 2018, I was aware of the high cost of health insurance for families and that factored into the decision I made. I knew it was going to, it was going to hurt, but I wanted to get over here. This is where my wife's business was based, so for me, it worked out, but I was aware of it and others certainly that I worked with were aware of the cost here. When I got here, it was actually a bit more difficult than I even expected. Not only do we have this unusually high cost for family insurance, we also have the policy where we have to pay the first and last month. So my first paycheck, I mean, I think it's been stated right now, we're paying almost 1,800 a month. Actually had to come up with not just the money for my first month, but I had to cover the money for my next month. When I talked to the former HR director at the time, they were aware of the difficulty and there were ideas thrown out, like, you know, your spouse trying to find an employer that could provide affordable family coverage, but that I would just say is really tough. That's a tough way to have to look at it. I know all the other agencies around here typically offer, you know, better options, but I don't think that should have to drive people. It does make it difficult for recruitment. Now as our department head, I definitely worry about that for retention. If any of our staff decide to have a family, suddenly they're going to get hit with that increased monthly cost and they're going to have to make a decision about what they want to do and how they're going to proceed. I mean, as far as I know, there was really only one other county that had a model like this that we usually come to and that's, that's changed. So I, I think right now, from my perspective, who's an employee and a department head, I mean, I feel like this does cause a problem for recruitment and retention and it is something that people in the community are aware of. And I, I just think often we don't hear that that's why people didn't apply. I certainly know people that that's why they don't have a position with the county because the health insurance is an issue and so it's not worth it for them to consider it, but we don't, we just don't necessarily directly hear that. So I think it could be playing a bigger role in recruitment and retention than we're aware of because we don't always hear those stories and that's why I thought it would be helpful to share mine today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
And I can speak to a couple of key positions where they tentatively accepted and then they asked about the benefits and the next day they came back and said, I can't afford to come here because even though it's a pay increase, I'm actually losing money because of the health contribution and they withdrew their acceptance.
Yeah. Scott DeLeon?
Good morning, Board. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to this. First of all, thank you, HR, for bringing this item to the discussion. I appreciate it very much. Just have a couple of points. Number one, I just lost a longtime employee to one of our cities here in the county because the city pays for their insurance, the employee's insurance and, and I lost a really good employee because of a better benefit package just right here in, in our own county. It's no surprise either, your Board, you've all heard my frustrations trying to recruit some of my higher, higher level positions. Again, kind of echoing some of the things that Pam and Patrick just said, it's, it's difficult to get people to come here once they see the benefit package. And finally, my last point, there's been some talk about impact to the general fund and it, it seems to get lost and I just want to make the point, self-funded departments pay this, pay this contribution. And so, you know, for the road department, and, and believe me, I'm not advocating against this because I, I really think we need to do something to improve our situation here, but for retention and recruitment. But for example, the road department pays that and pays that contribution. So for self-funded departments, it's an increase in, in our cost of doing business. So I just would like for that to be recognized. We'll figure it out. We, we figured it out so far with the increases that have been made. And again, please don't get me wrong, don't, don't think that I'm not appreciative because I, I am greatly appreciative and of the increases that your Board has approved over the last several years. But I just want to make that point and want it to be acknowledged that self-funded departments, this, this increase comes out of their budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, I'm not seeing any more hands up, so we'll bring it back to the Board.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve increasing the county healthcare monthly contribution to $1,500 and authorize the county administrative officer to execute resolutions for management and confidential units A and B and side letters for units three, four, five, Lake County Employee Association, unit six, Lake County Correctional Officers Association, unit eight, Lake County Deputy District Attorney Association, and unit 10, and the Lake County Safety Employees Association.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so why don't we take a six-minute break and come back at 10:45? Hey, welcome back. We're going on to our 7.3 item presentation of Lake County Hiring and Diversity Report for 2022 and consideration of drafting a request for a proposal to hire a diversity and inclusion consultant to help develop training goals and a plan to improve diversity and inclusion within Lake County's workforce, Human Resources.
Thank you. So in July of 2022, we started advertising with careers in government and using Diversity Boost. Diversity Boost automatically distributes to the eight career boards listed below and we've observed the following improvements since we started advertising with them. We have increased our Hispanic applicant flow by over 200 over 2021. We hired 17 more Hispanic employees over 2021. Asian Pacific Islander applicant flow decreased by 12, but we hired the same amount of employees in 2022, 10. Black applicant flow decreased by 44 applicants, but we hired two more black applicants over 2021. We increased the American Indian Alaskan Native applicant flow by 199 applicants over 2021 and hired 56 more American Indian Native employees over 2021. So I've shown illustrations for applicant flows for the last three years. You can see our applicant flow strongly mirrors our population, but I think using this new job board has increased our flow. I think we'll see greater improvements over the next coming year because this happened right in the middle of COVID, so we had less applicants overall as many people dropped out of the market. In a year and a half ago, we completed inclusion and diversity training with our management team and I would like to propose that we hire a consultant to increase training, increase goals, and help develop a plan to increase our diversity and inclusion in Lake County. Questions?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you for bringing this to us. This is actually a conversation that started prior, I mean, I guess it's been happening for a long time, but I know that I had this conversation with our prior CAO, hence what eventually came out, the diversity, inclusion, and I never know the full title of that committee since I'm not on it, but the committee that's been working on some of these things, and I was always looking for internal change. So I appreciated reading because I was not aware, even though I've had recent conversations regarding this, I was not aware of the changes that had been made to reach out to specific groups to ensure that we had a more diverse candidate pool. That's awesome. That's really good news. I love the numbers that I see, but I also remember seeing the full numbers of our staff where we stood as far as our demographics in comparison to our communities and it was not a highlightable situation to brag about at that moment in time. Our staff work hard, they do their part, but diversity is an important factor to make sure that we represent our communities well in our staff. I agree with a portion of this, but disagree with one part. I think there's stuff that we can continue to do that I don't think we should pay somebody to do for us. I think there's some very simple things that we can do. I don't know if we have a policy for a diversity hiring panel. Do we have a policy that ensures that we have a diverse panel that is interviewing to make sure that we're showing diversity, to make sure that we're creating the most welcoming and comfortable of situations for whoever it is we have? I know many other government agencies and colleges have equal opportunity statements that you submit and I just, I would hate to pay for things that are very kind of obvious that we can do and get accomplished, but there's other parts like the training, we're not experts in, in order to develop that and I think that we do need that. So to me, I'm okay with moving forward, but the details, I want to make sure we're not paying for things. We, we've had consultants in the past and I'll just be blatant where it just seemed like, okay, thank you for sharing with us the obvious stuff that's available for us to do. Everybody in every county in California is working on this stuff and so I'm sure that we can easily get some information from those counties as far as what they've done and what the results have been. And I would like to make sure that we do those things prior to paying someone else to tell us to do those things or I don't see that as a good use of our, of our money. So I'm okay with moving forward, but I just needed to make those statements that the details and what we're asking them to do, I think is important because I think there's more that we can do. And, and just a question as far as, and I'm sorry, I don't know the, I keep forgetting the name of the diversity and inclusion committee, but is there a role that that committee can play in the future to kind of continuously looking over those policies and providing advisory comments to the Board and things like that?
And I think there is. I also think that we need to have key department heads of the bigger hiring opportunities sit on that, on that board. I, I think a member of HR should sit on that board, but if HR doesn't do the hiring, we do the eligibility and then the list goes to the department head and then they hire. So I think unless we develop some clear training and guidelines, and I do remember in our diversity and equity and inclusion training, many managers, lots of things were brought to their attention and their thing was, okay, what's next? How do we make improvements here? Knowing that in our community is approximately 70% white, how do we make improvements? And I think that's where the coach is here to help us so that we can start thinking about how to make improvements, but it has to become a goal. It has to be clear direction and since HR doesn't make the hiring decisions, there, we have to come together as a management team and say, this is our goal to make these improvements. And I think one of the first things in looking at that is data, is to be able to look at this data. I didn't take our current staff because I can't do anything about who was hired before, but if we start looking at this data and we even break it down by departments, then we can come together. So I do think we need our management team involved with this and it needs to become part of basic operations, that they start making these considerations, just like we have a veterans preference and on panels, we, you know, we give points to veterans, maybe this is something we should look at for diversity and inclusion. So I think it's a much bigger conversation and I think we do need a little bit of guidance in setting the bar and then starting to measure and then, you know, making changes. And, and we have opportunities, there's a lot of different departments that are changing right now. This is where maybe we start looking at this, maybe we look at a recruiter that specializes in equity and diversion, diversity, sorry, to, to help hire on some of these key department heads that are coming up right now.
And the committee, though, is public-facing. It's not an internal committee. Supervisor Crandall?
What's that? I'm sorry. It's a public, you mean?
Yes, it's a public committee, so it's not looking at our internal practices.
But I know that we, we've worked with them on a few things where we've looked, you and I remember met with some of the facilitators about something.
We did. I was only briefly on that committee, but it was...
No, it was something on, were you on that? You were on that with me, that's right.
For like a month or something. But I think it's, it's sort of a different work plan, isn't it? With the goals for the community?
Right.
Rather than looking inside at HR and hiring practices.
Right now, it's basically planning for a forum for, I want to say near future. I don't, I know the date, or not date, but I know they talked about April and May, but then again, you know? But I do know that working with the facilitators, I, you know, I don't, we're already working with them. I don't know if that's something that we can look at. I mean, I hear what you're saying, it's for the public, but again, I think the two facilitators are knowledgeable in this and if we can, if it can be something that we work on with them on this, it might be something to look at, you know? But the, the actual forum for it is, is that of the, the community. So, but there's three basically work groups, health, law enforcement, and education.
Yeah, but adding to that work plan would be an investment.
Right.
And what is the, what were you thinking of for this RFP, for the proposal to be? Is it like, what sort of dollar? Is it like, what sort of dollar amount? What side of sort of commitment? Have you kind of thought about that yet?
Yeah, I haven't fully vetted that out. When I was looking at this, I just knew, I felt like we needed some help to take it to the next level. I think this has helped. I think there's a few more job boards that I can also add to this. And in seeing our percentages, then maybe we increase some of our advertising dollars towards some different job boards as well. Because we, previously, we never spent money on this. And so last year was the first year I said I'd like some money to work with Careers in Government, which is specialized in our marketplace, but also knowing that they had this diversity boost. And I can see, you know, we're looking at six months of data, some improvement. So I think if we increase advertising and increase awareness within our departments, and maybe, you know, part of this has to come as part of the review process. So for each department is develop a report like this for you guys to look at when you're having a conversation with your department heads on where they're at, because we can't change it until we look at it. So creating reports and starting to look at it and creating a commitment towards driving diversity, which, which starts with all of our management team, I think would be helpful. We've pledged this, but I think now we need to have some goals around this and how we can change. Now, obviously, somebody that has one or two hires a year, you know, may not make a big difference, but in some of our larger departments, by looking at this, we can start driving it. And so I think we have to start with some reporting and then creating goals. It's not going to change overnight. And then making our management team more aware of these goals and how to change mindset. And that's what I need the coach for. So until we put it out to bid, I really don't have an idea of cost. I would, I can touch base with Nicole, who did our diversity and equity and inclusion training for us, because she works with many different organizations doing just this to get some budget figures.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to augment what Pam is saying. I think, I think it's, there's two paths I can see clearly. One is the outside recruitment and options to draw in a more diverse workforce, but also developing the toolkits for the supervisors, not the supervisors, sorry, the department heads and their team, give them those skill sets and training and how to keep that mindset of diversifying their workforce and how to achieve that, and what other options do they have for recruitment, or even developing pipelines from the community college or the high schools as far as diversity. Those are just my thoughts.
I left my pen in.
Okay, let me get the supervisor green first, then we'll get to you and your lotion.
Thank you very much for bringing this forward. Yeah, I don't know how you would scope it. I don't know what the cost would be, but strongly in support of an R F P to start asking these important questions. And although this report kind of focuses on ethnic and cultural differences, I want to highlight one of the things that just stands out to this day, and that's the, and it's not a criticism of anybody, I want to be very clear, not a criticism, but there's gender imbalance in some of our, some of our departments that is pretty striking. And, and I know when we're talking recruiting and retention, any warm body and a vacancy, you take what you get. But that practice, you know, you take a look at an art or chart or two in some of our departments and through no, again, through nobody's fault, we tend to be falling into some gender stereotypes as far as where people are landing in some of these positions, you know. So, and I think that is an issue that the county has to wrestle with, both in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion, but also delivery of services. If we aren't showing appropriate balance in our workforce, but we're dealing with a very diverse community, you know, we're sending subtle little signals when they're seeing people at the front counter in certain occupations, people out in the field in certain occupations. And so I think gender balance among ethnic identification is something this county does need to look at very closely.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, you know, I'm glad you said that, Supervisor Green, because that's what I was going to basically look at too, is the way we conduct sexual harassment, you know, maybe that's something we look at as having a diversity type of training as well, because, I mean, I still need to do it, actually. I've been given the document, but we have to go through that training and sign off on it. And if we can get to that point of having diversity, equity, inclusion type of training, it kind of gets it on the, not the same level, but you get that rather than going further into having a, like your, your concern, having to R F P for someone to come and do that training, we can get to a point of where everyone's watching a video initially showing that we have some sort of policy or something in place. And I know that that's what this is about. But I just wanted to highlight that because I thought of that, of the training when, when we were talking about this, so.
And I do think we'll get there, and Vector Solutions has diversity training, but I think the initial kickoff, it's an important conversation that maybe needs to be in person the first time, and then we have this as follow-up training because it, you, you need a seasoned professional to guide the conversation so that conversations don't get emotional or out of hand or go in a direction we don't want them to go. So I do think it's a two-pronged approach in having this conversation, but the goals, I think, are more for management. And, you know, if we share this type of report with our department heads as it relates to their department, then they can start thinking about, how do I make changes within my own department? But if they don't have raw data to look at, it makes it difficult to start changing that mindset. So first, I think we have to start looking at it. We can't change it until we acknowledge it, until we drive the change.
Supervisor Spatier?
Just want to comment on something C A O Parker said, and I think supervisors should be involved in all future trainings. We deal with the public, and we also hire and deal with personnel issues. And I think that it's important that we do exactly what we would like everyone else to do because we're not perfect by any means either. So I think that we definitely need to be involved, just as much as a department head needs to be involved in, maybe a little bit outside of the scope of the conversation, but I would almost prefer a policy than just specific goals. That way, this is the way you follow the hiring process. That's an H R policy that everyone has to follow, and I just think it needs to eventually be embedded in those types of things.
I also wanted to make a comment. I do have to say that our gender diversity, I look, I was looking just at our senior management team, and it's one of the first places I've been where women executives are on par with men. We're a little over 50% women. So I think we're doing a good job in some areas. Now, I think there are going to be traditional areas. You're probably not going to find a lot of women in, you know, working in the sewer or working in water, or it's just traditionally not driven. I looked at that when we were, when I was at the city. So, I mean, there are some jobs that are not going to attract certain people. So, but you can certainly reach out to different boards to see if you can attract that. But I think it starts with looking at the data and seeing where we're at and where we want to be.
Okay. Anything from the public? All right, we'll bring it back to the board.
And one last question. In your estimation, do you believe this will be below 25 or above 25,000?
Probably.
Does that make the difference between coming back to the board or not?
I mean, I would think it's going to be at the 25 and above mark.
Because I would ask that, I think we're all interested in enhancing our capabilities to attract more diverse candidates and hire more diverse candidates if they meet the qualifications and whatnot. So I think even if it is under 25, I would like to request that it still come back to the board because I think we need to continue to talk about it in a more public way than just in a private way.
I'm in agreement with that.
That's just my...
No problem. And I wanted to speak to one more point you asked about how our hiring boards are comprised. Really, that's set up by the department head, and if you have over 25 applicants now, then it, you're required to have a hiring board. And the department head sets the hiring board of one internal expert and one external expert. So I, we might have to develop some, some guidelines there, but it really depends on the makeup of the department because you might not have a diverse subject manner expert, given the makeup of our personnel.
And I think that we can make policies that figure out how to deal with that to ensure a diverse hiring panel. I think that's just as important as what's sitting in the seat of people being interviewed.
Okay. Action.
There's nothing further. I move to approve drafting a request for proposal to hire a diversity inclusion consultant to help develop training goals and a plan to improve diversity, inclusion within Lake County's workforce, and to bring that R F P back to the board for review and approval.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
7.4, Consideration of Agreement Between the County of Lake and Dewberry Architects, Inc. For Architectural and Engineering Services For The Remodel Of The Former California Armory, Army National Guard Armory. Public Services Director Ewing.
Okay. Good morning. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. As was, was referenced in the, in the title, what is up for the board's consideration is an agreement with Dewberry Architects for, for preliminary design services for the armory, and I'll elaborate on that a bit. Last year, in coordination with, with the Sheriff's Office, Public Services solicited an R F P for design services for architectural and engineering services for the armory. For some, some background, as your board is well aware, the county owns the, the armory, and the intent is that that would be renovated, or the term in the architectural world that I have since learned is adaptive reuse for a sheriff's administration center, to do a lot more than just sheriff administration, but, but to be renovated, remodeled for that use. Initially, the, the idea was to, was to solicit proposals for the cradle-to-grave management of that, of that design, meaning programming, preliminary schematic design, design development, construction documents, all the way through to construction administration. In consideration of the, the lack of kind of preliminary awareness of what the vision is, it was, it became apparent that it was challenging for the, for the consultants to scope out, to include costs for, for the future design when, when it wasn't defined what that program was at the beginning. What is it going to be used for? How many spaces are they looking to design for? So we, we scoped it back down to just, for the scope of work being proposed, essentially it's just that preliminary design phase. So it's a feasibility assessment, schematic design level work. So that's what the scope of, of this, this agreement includes. So I want to be, be sure that your board is aware that once this work is done, we fully anticipate moving ahead with what's called design development and construction documents, what, what most people kind of think about when, when we're talking about design for a building. But this is, this is the preliminary work. So Dewberry Architects was, was selected. We received seven proposals. Dewberry was, was ranked by a consultant selection board as the highest ranked firm. And, and I'd recommend that we, we move ahead with that initial phase. The dollar amount is $247,926. The scope of the work is anticipated to be complete for this work in about four to five months, at which point we would, as long as Dewberry is, is performing satisfactorily, we would anticipate getting a, a cost proposal for the next phase of work and then, and move forward there. Funding is included in a couple of different budget units, and this, this is certainly in line with, with what I expected to see for, for a cost estimate of this phase of work.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Happy we're here.
Yeah. Any public input? Seeing any? Okay. Bring it back to the board.
Move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Dewberry Architects, Incorporated, for Architectural and Engineering Services For The Remodel Of The Former California Army National Guard Armory, and authorize the chair to sign. Is there supposed to be a number or we're good? No? That's it? All right.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right. Let's get started on the armory.
Absolutely.
Exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. 7.5, Consideration Of Contract Change Order Number Two For The Hill Road Correctional Facility Tower Electronic Security Upgrade Project Bid Number 22-30. Public Services Director Ewing.
Okay. Good morning again. For the board's consideration, change order number two for, for the project that is just nearing completion, the scope of this work, which is only about a, less than a 3% contract change order, is, is to add some, some lighting, some switches, some outlets, basically for, for correctional officer and for their efficiency in operations in the, in the control room. This was recommended by, by the contractor, and then in discussions with, with jail staff, they were very supportive of it. So we, we requested of the contractor a cost to complete that work, and that's where the $12,155 comes from.
Okay. Comments? Questions? Public? Okay. Back to the board.
There's no further comment, Honorable Chair. I move we approve change order number two with R and B Electronics Electrical Contracting For The Hill Road Correctional Facility Tower Electronic Security Upgrade Project Bid Number 22-30 For An Increase Of $12,155 And Revised Contract Amount Of $462,055 And Authorize The Chair To Sign.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, perfect. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And the very last thing we have, I believe, is calendars. Who is ready? Thank you, Lars.
I am.
All right. Supervisor Crandall?
So I'll go ahead and start off with, we met last Thursday for the Lake County Recreation Agency Board meeting, our first one. Went pretty well. We chose a chair, a vice chair. We're going to look at further dates. I think they're going to be the fourth Thursday of the month. Is that monthly? That's monthly, right? Yes. And so we're going to look at bylaws and all of the other intricacies of this J P A. And yeah, looking forward to it. So there was that. I'll go to this week. Tomorrow, I have the East Region Town Hall in Clear Lake Oaks, and then I'll go to the C S A number two. Thursday, AAA. Actually said it was last week, but I got it wrong. It's this week. Friday, I'll be here at the office. And then Monday, Middle Creek Restoration, back here on Tuesday for the board supervisors.
Supervisor Spatier, you ready?
Sure. So just quickly, we did review some, I think is important. There wasn't any major changes, but reviewing our ARPA expenditures, making sure that our money is being spent down or else by the end of 2024, we may have to give stuff back. And so we're just paying attention, seeing if we need to bring anything back to the board in order to ensure that all those monies are spent appropriately in the places that we want that to, based on the approvals from the board of supervisors months ago. So that was a good meeting, and looking forward, I think we said in August or September, we'll be doing something during our budget to explain exactly where we stand, and then we'll be back at it again in August, September to continue the review of those funds, making sure they're getting spent. On Saturday, I was at Lower Lake High School for the Blue Zones approval for the Connaught Unified School District, as well as, as well as their grant opening of their track. Blue Zones is definitely expanding. I believe they just did the WIC building or the, the WIC. did the WIC building, or the, the WIC agency not too long ago in the Saw Shop as well. So we're seeing them growing in the community, and I know it's becoming a, hate to use the word, but it's becoming more of a trendy term that I see in a lot of newspapers and magazines. People are looking for a new healthy style, lifestyle that's permanent, rather than just kind of a fad. And obviously, Blue Zones is based on the history of people organically having healthy lives and healthy outcomes. And so that's what they bring into this community. So continuing to see that expansion is good. We did not have our Middle Creek Restoration meeting yesterday, but that has been moved to next Monday. So looking forward to having that conversation. Tomorrow, APC LTA meeting, meeting with Hope Rising on Thursday, another Hope Rising retreat to continue to prepare for our next fiscal year. I'm meeting also with a couple departments based on our drought emergency that we just continued today, to see, based on where we are with the state of California, and what urgency ordinances we had passed, what needs to stay and what can go before we lose everything all at the same time. So I'm looking forward to that, so that we can bring that back to the board of supervisors to review. Then I'm going to be attending the Clear Lake City Council meeting on that evening. And on Friday, I will be, I am hoping that Cao Parker will be able to join, but I will be meeting with both our hospitals, a couple fire districts, as well as North Coast EMS, to discuss our IFTs, and hoping that we have a good discussion, a healthy discussion on how to move forward. And then again, we'll be on Friday evening checking out our warming shelter and seeing how things are going. And then Monday, I already talked about our Middle Creek Restoration meeting, our meeting with our Cao. I'll be having a PEG Board meeting that evening. We do have a potential new member to fill in our two vacant seats, still looking for a final member. I believe we only have one application currently. And then back here on Tuesday.
Who's ready over here?
I'm ready. So finishing up the meeting today, going to be with Supervisor Spatier at the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce this evening.
That's right.
At the new Greenview Room. So happy we're going to be able to attend that event. A little challenging when they schedule it on board days, but today it's going to work out. So tomorrow, Lake APC and LTA Board Meeting. On Wednesday, Thursday, don't have anything currently on the calendar, and then Friday, Cao Parker will be having that. As far as this weekend, obviously, it's Easter weekend, spending that time with family. There are a lot of events around the county that are, you know, really back in full effect, you know, since the COVID pandemic. So glad to see that. And I'll be moving through that on Monday, scheduled with lunch with Russ Kramer in the South County, and then back here on Tuesday. Would like to report just that we did finally have our meeting. Jessica, you can expand a little more, but with Senator Maguire, talked, you know, many different issues. But I know one of the ones, I wanted to make sure that Senator was aware of electric vehicle charging station, the EV rollout that's happening throughout the state of California for infrastructure here in Lake County, hydrogen opportunities with LTA and APC, that we continue to look at that long-term transition that's going to be happening, that we're not left out. We don't want to build up 101 and then in five. The other way, we want to make sure that we have a, a good opportunity for long-term infrastructure needs here in Lake County when it comes to the electrical vehicle, charging stations and others as they're rolled out. I'm not sure how many we have in the county. I know it's increasing, but we got a long ways to go. As you know, we're a low-income county, and we want to make sure whether it's charging stations at home for individuals, other opportunities, that we don't miss out on those, as people are being asked to purchase hybrid or electric vehicles, you know, which is going to be a challenge if prices don't come down. So just want to make sure those things are met. I know Chair Pisca will give some more information of the conversations we had. But I really want to thank Senator Maguire for being here, taking the time for Lake County. I know we didn't get a chance to have that last time, because he had some other stuff going on, but we'll continue those conversations. Supervisor Spatier, I know, I don't remember if, I don't know, that was two weeks ago. All right, forget it. We're talking about Avis, so I forgot. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. I was privileged to attend the memorial for Scott Grove on Sunday, and the reception at Lakeport Yacht Club. Just a charming family, blended family, and so good to see the community come out with such force to honor Scotty and his family. It was very touching to see. APC LTA, I'm an alternate, but I do plan to listen in. I haven't been able to attend some of the prior meetings, and I just want to educate myself on, that's some complicated funding going on there. Children's Council, LCOE tomorrow at 1:00. Do believe Continuum of Care is on for Thursday. I didn't hear you mention that, but I know your primary, and I'll be attending a secondary. There's some stuff on the agenda of interest. Friday is, California Department of Fish and Wildlife is the primary agency on the Clear Lake Hitch Task Force. We do have some staff assigned to it. I'm not entirely sure who it is, though. So although policy people won't be tuning in, I just wanted to highlight, they are meeting monthly on the first Fridays. And this last Friday, CDFW put out a press release highlighting all, many of the efforts that they've put together over the past several months, to kind of drive the Clear Lake Hitch recovery. And they also announced that they had committed $2 million in state funding this year for this effort. So kudos to CDFW for taking a leadership role on that. And I think that's all I have.
I did have one significant thing I forgot. Partnering with the South Lake County Fire Protection District, Middletown Rancheria, we had our first test of our siren for the South County that was placed on the rancheria yesterday. Definitely works. Will people up? But hopefully, what it'll do is push down that canyon almost all the way to the county line. We're trying to get that confirmed, but definitely helps out with just that alertness and awareness. You know, we have, fire season will be here before we know it. So we were excited to have that opportunity, and it, it went off very well.
Was it 11:00 AM with the rest of them?
Yep, with everything else. It's all tied in.
All right. That's going to be ringing all around the county.
Nice and loud.
Is it a horn? Is it a siren?
It's a siren. So it went about 30 seconds. When they're in full rotation, it's three minutes. So you get a taste of it, but a full rotation is a three-minute, you know, it should put everybody on alert. So you have Hidden Valley, we have all the ones in the South County, which, you know, that kind of ends it over there to the county line anyway, to the south on 29. So excited to have that.
And January is supposed to be the three-minute, right?
Three-minute, yep.
And yeah, so that's all the South County sirens, the Cobb sirens, and now the Riviera sirens. All right. It was really great to have our dinner with Senator Maguire, and also the, our friends from the city. We talked a lot about the fire mapping, PG&E issues. He really wanted to talk about Care Court. And the North Coast region is going to be up next for going and starting the process. And he's going to be inviting us to, I think it's Mendocino County in July, to kind of walk through what all of that looks like. So he's very excited. So we'll just see how, how, how things unroll, and how we can participate in the process in July. Had a lot of meetings last week, but everyone else covered it, so that's, works for me. Tomorrow, agenda review at 8:30. Oh, I'm sorry, we, I did have a couple meetings yesterday that no one else was at. There was an intro conversation with WRA, which is a, it's an organization in Sonoma County that does a lot of the environmental work. They're consulting company, they write grants, they have engineers on staff, and it, Molly Curly O'Brien, who worked with Rebuild North Bay, and then after the fire, has moved over there. And so she reached out to see how they could be helpful with our capacity issues. So that was a really great meeting. And then later on in the afternoon, we had a meeting with Biogenetic Methane Pilot Project Presentation about floating islands. Oh, you were on that one?
Yeah.
Yes. That was pretty interesting, too. So more to come on that, I think. So yeah, tomorrow, agenda review, and then Hazard Grant Program Meeting, Prepare California Match Initiative, TID. We're doing those in person now, so we will be at the city of Clear Lake, in, in their city hall. Then I will be up at the Bog's Hell Attack for the Calpine video. And then a meeting with the Lake County Democrats. They want an update on priorities for the year. Thursday morning, Sota Bay Corridor kickoff with Hedway, who's the consultant who has been selected to prepare the evacuation grant, through the evacuation grant for the Sota Bay Corridor. So that's super exciting to get that rolling. The Governing Board meeting for AAA is at the same time as my class, and so I'm going to make a decision on that. But because my class is almost over, next week is the last week, and I'll be at CSAC, I might want to do that, if that's okay. You got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what we're here for.
Yeah.
All right. And then Friday, my class at 11:00, and then we are having another meeting with MGE, our contractor selected to do tree, tree removal for the Hazard Tree Removal Project for our OES grant submittal. So we're meeting with them. Saturday, I know, there's lots of fun Easter events. There is going to be an egg hunt at Mountain Meadow Golf Course in Cobb, and I'm not sure if the one in, I think that one may have been Kelseyville, or canceled, so never mind on that. And then Monday, the 10th, Cao, a meeting with the Cao, and then Tuesday here, and then we'll be leaving for Sacramento. That concludes our meeting for today. Do you have one more thing?
Yeah, sorry.
Sure.
I just wanted to highlight that Region 9, Martha Guzman from EPA, had sent an email. We're preparing for a meeting, or she's preparing for a meeting next Wednesday, about the Middle Creek flood damage, which is Middle Creek Restoration. When she came last, I think it was two weeks ago, for the EPA Superfund site, explained, and I've been explaining this, I think all of you know, that how the Middle Creek Restoration project would provide a really good habitat for the hitch. And then that's what she highlighted, the survival of the hitch and other tribal beneficial uses in around the lake. One of the strategies was to utilize the whole of government to fully realize that Middle Creek Restoration Reduction and Ecosystem Project would be beneficial to the survival. And so she's setting up a meeting for, it's, it conflicts with the Tribal Water Summit, but inviting different tribes, different governments, and also the Department of Water Resources and Army Corps apparently are going to be present to discuss the, where they're at with that. Wade Crowfoot even chimed in in the email as well, talking about the administration for the state is working across tribal and federal, state, and local governments to save and recover the Clear Lake Hitch. And so that's exciting. That'll be next week, of course, but getting some comments in by Friday to go ahead and get ready for that, and make sure that, emphasize how important that project is to the survival, and go from there. So just letting you all know.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thanks for joining us, and that is it for today. This meeting is adjourned, as we have no closed session items.